It is 6:00 PM. I am calling this meeting to order. I am Mayor Robinson. I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city or our city of Lake City, South Carolina. We will have the invocation by Councilmember Brown and a pledge allegiance by Mayor Protem Singletary. If we can all stand, please.
Lord, come to you at this hour to do what's right by the city of Lake City. Well, we want you to guide us and lead us in the right direction as we handle city business. And with all thanks and given, we wish an amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I ask Madam Clerk to poll the council members, I do want to say, just state a few things to everyone here tonight. If there's any males in the building, can you please remove your hat? And also, with such a big crowd that we have tonight, if you have any conversations with the ongoing meeting tonight, can you please keep your voice low? And that's just so everyone in the audience can be able to hear what we're talking about up here. I know sometimes there's conversations going on in the audience, but can you please keep those conversations till later, or just keep your voice low? And that's just for respect for others to be able to hear. And also, we do have in place for public comment period time, we ask in our policy for you to please respect our policy at two minutes. If you think you need to go over two minutes, we ask you to please come in, speak with yours truly, the mayor, speak with Madam Clerk, speak with the city administrator, contact your district member. We definitely want to respect that two minutes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the council members? Present.
Present.
Councilmember Willamina Scott.
Councilmember William Askins.
Councilmember Juanica Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby.
President Alabam.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jason Brown.
Present.
Mayor Robinson, I volunteer to be informed.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed? So move.
Crosby.
Second. It has been properly moved and second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
I have a comment to make, please.
On the agenda, Ms. Crosby? It's the agenda.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I was premature.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I need a motion to approve the minutes, and that's the approval of the June 13, 2023, mayor and council meeting minutes.
Move to approve, Crosby?
Second. It has been properly moved. And second, any questions?
Yes, uh, Crosby, I have a comment to make. On page, do you want to give me clearly?
We can.
Thank you. On page 13, in the very middle of the page, where it says, um, Councilmember Willamina Scott's name, it's legally under her name. It says, Councilmember Crosby, please look at the grievance committee. Uh, it doesn't have, I think Marshall was the one that made that statement. Marshall McCluret made that statement, but her name is not attached to that statement. And, um, also... Look, it's present at the last meeting. Did not have me listed as present. You'll get the very first page. It has all of the council members and mayor, and my name was, I guess inadvertently omitted, but I was present because it is referenced in the minutes that I made comments. So I'm assuming that's a fact of record error.
Okay. Is there any other issues or concerns with the minutes? Councilmembers, no other questions? There's no other questions? All in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Next, we will be going towards our presentations for the evening. And as I state these presentations, this is the order that they will go in. We are recognizing Mr. Justin McNair for Lake City Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, PD Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, and the State of South Carolina Traditional Youth of the Year. Second, we will be recognizing five young ladies for participating in the Palmetto Girls State this year. Thirdly, we'll be recognizing 10 young ladies for participation in Sisters in STEM at NASA Space Center. And fourth recognition tonight, we're recognizing Mr. Tyler Green, a seventh grader student at J. Paul Trula Creative Arts and Science Magnet School, who wrote his first book. We will begin with Mr. Justin McNair. If you can come forward, please.
I am going to present this certificate, and then we're going to let the gentleman here that's accompanying Mr. Justin McNair have a moment to speak. And if Mr. Justin McNair wants to speak, he can as well. This is your moment. Certificate of Achievement presented to Justin McNair for his accomplishment as Lake City Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, PD Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, and the State of South Carolina Youth of the Year. Presented to you tonight from Mayor Yumika Robinson and...
Lake City City Council from the city of Lake City, South Carolina, and we congratulate you.
Do you want us to pause for a picture?
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Roberts for extending the invitation for me to come and have the honor to recognize this awesome young man. My name is James Brown. I'm not the Godfather now, but my wife told me to stop saying, but I do feel good. I can't help it. I can't help. I'm not going to sing now, trust me. But on a serious note, it's an honor again to be here. Justin McNair has done an outstanding job in regards to his involvement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of PD, and I'm here today, I'm the youth advocate for, so you know why I'm, that I'm not the Godfather. I'm a youth advocate for Boys and Girls Clubs of the Crescent, which is based in Columbia, and former state alliance director. So it's an honor to be here. So without further delay, because I know you've got a lot of business, I have, if I could get this gentleman here to come with me, and where's Mike? Come, Mike? Yeah, so, so Justin has numerous awards, and the first one, first of all, let me just say, the Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year program is sponsored by Boys and Girls Clubs of America. And each year, it starts at a level where you are nominated, elected for you for the year for your particular club. In this case, Justin is elect city. And then there's a state competition, which Justin participated in. And in that state competition, he, out of all of the counties and the clubs in South Carolina, which represents well over 20,000 kids throughout the state, he was elected, selected, not elected, selected as the state Youth of the Year for the entire state of South Carolina. And also, from being selected, the Youth of the Year for the state, he had an opportunity to go to the regionals in Atlanta, Georgia, and he did well. And we had expected him to go to win that award and go to DC and win that new Toyota, but he didn't quite get there yet. But he did extremely well in Atlanta. I wasn't there, but I was informed that he did extremely well in this competition. And the regionals, regionals, I'm gonna be done in a second. The regionals, they are from states from Virginia all the way down to Louisiana. And I'm not, so he was highly represented in the state of South Carolina. Now, I can get you a hold of that for a minute. And now, I'm not going to go through all these awards, because I'll just say, this is one for him being the regional finalist. This is for him, Justin being the state Youth of the Year. And this, well, you already know what that is. And I'll take this one right here. And this, this, this is a concurrent resolution signed by the South Carolina Senate and the House, which, which has to be voted upon by members of the House and Senate, and they unanimously voted to, to present this proclamation back in May. I, May, and I've had the opportunity to meet your wonderful male there. And he was recognized before the full House and the Senate as the state Youth of the Year. And it's a concurrent resolution. And actually, if you go on the, just Google in South Carolina Senate Resolution and put his name, he's on the website. You can find that, all the information. So I'm not going to take time to read that. So again, thank you for the opportunity, and let's give Justin another round of applause.
Good evening. I am the direct, I'm Mr. Stormy Gillens. I'm the director for the Lake City Boys and Girls Club here. None of this could have been possible without, first of all, Almighty God. We have a fine young man here who is just so humble. Justin graduated at the age of 16, and every day since he's graduated, he's been at the Boys and Girls Club. Most youth at that age would already start with their journey and everything else, but he's been coming back every single day, giving back to those who are his junior. I would like for Mr. Jerry Singletary and Ms. Fryson to please come forward for just a minute, please. They are members of the Lake City Boys and Girls Club. We have a presentation for Mr. McNair. Mayor Robinson is also on our board, and Mr. Mike Woods is our program manager for the Lake City Boys and Girls Club. And this year, this is the first for the Lake City Boys and Girls Club. We spoke about this amongst the board members, came to a unanimous decision that we were going to start this, this coming year, and we would like to present a check to Mr. Justin McNair for $550 as a scholarship to help him out along with school. I also want to like to make sure I make a note of this, that Mr. Olander Wilson also contributed to this as well. He's been giving back to our youth here in the, in the community. So I definitely want to make sure that we make a note of that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That's just one of our youth in Lake City, just one. Next, we're going to have the young ladies from Palmetto Girls State, if you can come up. You know who you are. And if I can ask Ms. Mary Ellen Player to come as well. She is the catalyst of choosing these young ladies from our city, Lake City, South Carolina, in Florence School District Three. And we just wanted to let you all know, because I've had the honor to go and speak at Girls State. This is the third year that I've went to speak to 600-plus girls from across the state of South Carolina about government. And this year, I was able to speak to them more about my role as being mayor and then the first female mayor of our town. So it's just been a pleasure, and we just wanted to recognize you, celebrate you, and honor you tonight, because you definitely deserve it. All right. I see those smiles. She's going to present, and then I'll have you say something. Okay, do we have Ms. Esther Campbell for participation in Palmetto Girls State from Mayor Yumika Robinson, 2023, in the City of Lake City Council? She's not here tonight. Is it Laney? Laney, okay, great. We have Laney Kirby for participation in Palmetto Girls State. We have Ms. Jahara Carzo for participation in Palmetto Girls State. We have Ms. Anari Washington for participation in the Palmetto Girls State. And we have Faithful Lynn Gibson for participation in Palmetto Girls State. So I'm going to pass the mic. Oh, we're going to take a photo, and I'm gonna allow Ms. Player to say a few words.
Well, Mayor Robinson, it is my distinct pleasure to be here tonight because of these fine young women who represent our community so well in a program that is not only statewide honor, but a national honor as well. The Girls State Program is sponsored by the American Legion Auxiliary, which is the largest women's veterans organization that supports veterans every day. South Carolina actually has one of the most prestigious Girls State programs in the United States. Just as a point of comparison, our program is 200 delegates larger than the state of California. So we definitely punch above our weight. And that goes for all of these fine young women from Lake City as well. So I had the distinct pleasure of getting to know two of them actually very well. This was my 24th summer at Girls State and sponsoring young women for the last 10 of those years. And I can tell you that we are in good hands. We worry about the future of our country, of our city, and these young women are leading the way. They advocate for their friends. They speak for those that can't speak for themselves. I know specifically that Jahara was featured on the Girls State Instagram almost every day because she asked questions. She asked really insightful, good questions. She was the first question to you, I believe. You know, so we're featuring our young women, particularly at a time when there are not enough women in elected office. And so that's what this program is all about. We should be excited and champion these, these young women for the rest of their lives, and they're part of a Girls State family that will do that for the rest of their lives. I could not be more proud of our town, of these young women, every time they show up at Girls State, as well as an unofficial Girls Stater, Mayor Robinson, who's been, who's been with us for the last three years. So thank you so much for honoring them tonight. They deserve it. I can't wait to see what they will do next.
I am so proud of you all. Thank you so much. Next, we have the young ladies from the Sisters of STEM that attended NASA Space Center in Houston, Texas. Can you please come forward? And we also have Ms. Mary Howard from Florence School District Three, and Ms. Sarah Gay, and Ms. Evelyn. Yes, and Dr. Hickson. We all know who Dr. Hickson is. Well, no, you can, you can, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna try my best not to mess up your names. I don't think we have all girls here tonight, but it's fine. But we still have a presentation for them. But the certificate reads, "STEM at NASA Space Center, helping to bring that dream closer to reality." And this is presented to Nysaria Washington for participating in STEM at the NASA Johnson Space Center in Houston, Texas. And this is presented from Mayor Yumika Robinson and the Lake City City Council, 2023. Nysaria Washington. She's not here. Okay. Next, it's Caitlin Turner. Scarlett Stone. Samiria Scott. Is that right? Oh. Correct. You got to correct people when they miss, miss say, say your name now. Nataria, Natrea, Natrea Roberts. Nope. Kayden Green. Janay Clark. Gloria Chavez. Ashlyn Byrd. And Caitlin Byrd. I know they're sisters. So I'm gonna allow each and every one of you to say something, if you like. Why not? Why not? It's an honor. It's an honor. Not yet. Okay, I'm gonna pass the mic to Dr. Hickson.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is our mission in Florence Three to ensure our students are college and career-ready, productive and responsible citizens. And I can tell you, even from the students that were recognized tonight, they are Florence School District Three students, 90% of them. And the students up here, they are definitely leading the way. And many thanks to our community partners. This was definitely a partnership. It was a community effort to get these girls to Houston. They flew to Houston. They were there for three days. They also participated in a camp. And really, I was baiting for Mr. Burgess to come on up here, because he was the brain behind starting the Sisters in STEM and all things manly. So we also have a partnership with Harbor Freight. So it's a strong partnership that supports Florence School District Three and the efforts we're doing with our students. Again, we want our students to be successful, and we're just excited about the opportunity. Ms. Gay, I'm telling you, she's a hard worker. I mean, she had the funds coming in every day. But I appreciate it. So I do have a booklet that I would like to leave, and it just kind of highlights all the summer learning opportunities that our students participated in this summer. It includes the students, the Sisters in STEM. We have other Florence School District Three staff here, and I would love for them to stand, as well as our board members, if you could quickly stand, just to be recognized, because again, this is on behalf of Florence County School District Three Board and our entire staff. And students. So thank you, Mayor. Great opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Gay?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. And it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you to Florence School District Three. This was a dream of Mrs. McNair, because she comes every year for the 5K walk run. And we went over to the Ron McNair School of Digital Communications and Technology. And she said, I wish that we can bring some students down to NASA. And upon that wish, I said, okay. And spoke with Dr. Hickson, got with our treasurer in our class. This is Dr. Evelyn Fulmore, who keeps our money. And this was the second year that we partnered with Florence School District Three. Last year, last year, we started off with a STEM program that was in Columbia. And it was Last year, we started off with a STEM program that was in Columbia, and it was nice. So we took it upon ourselves to do a little bit more. Didn't know how God was going to bless us, but He showered down His blessings upon us, and we are so grateful. While in Houston, we had the opportunity to go by the tree, the Dr. Ronald McNear tree, and it was a moment for myself and Sheryl. And at that moment, she shared with me that this was a vision of my Aunt Pearl, who wanted Dr. McNear to come back to Lake City to inspire our youth. Well, we're an extension of him, and we want to continue to inspire our youth. Everyone in here has a part in this process of inspiring our youth. Mission inspired, while we were there, y'all were watching us, we were watching you, okay? And in doing so, Mrs. McNear wants to recognize one of the young ladies who did, she felt, an exceptional job. She had leadership skills, stood up, did things first when we went to the airstrip. And this was Ms. Gloria. She was able to, they asked for a volunteer to sit in the ejection chair. She was the first to strap in. When we got, went over to the jets, weren't you the first to jump in? Oh, was someone else? Oh, okay. But most of them did. So I pray that this was a pleasure for you all. Thank you to Ms. Mary, oh my God. I so appreciate you being, because I bothered her too. So thank you all, to the parents, to all of our supporters, because it just wasn't us, as I said. The community came about and they did great things, so we thank you all. And the Farrah Turner Foundation assisted a lot as well.
Thank you, thank you. We can definitely see that Ms. Gay's heart is there, because you can truly hear it in her voice as she speak about it. And she really, I felt like I was on the journey too, because if you're on Facebook, she kept pictures coming and coming and coming, letting us know how the girls, what the girls were doing. I'm going to say young ladies, excuse me, what the young ladies were doing. And it just showed that the legacy of Dr. Ronnie McNear from Lake City is continuing, going on and on and on, and that's what we have to do. So this is just proof here today. Thank you, ladies, so much. Last presentation, but not least, we have, we are recognizing this distinguished young man here from the City of Lake City. He's a 7th grader at the J. Paul Trula Creative Arts and Science Magnet School who wrote his first book. I haven't even got there yet. Can Mr. Tyler Green come forth, please? I don't have to say anything. So we want to present this to you tonight from myself, Mayor Robinson, and from the Lake City City Council, recognizing Tyler Green as a 7th grade student at J. Paul Trula Creative Arts and Science Magnet School who wrote his first book, a comic book called "The Story of a Hero," presented to you tonight from Yumika Robinson, Mayor of the City of Lake City and Lake City Council, 2023. Do you have some words, sir?
I do, I know. To be honest, like, when I was thinking of making a book, like, I did it in first grade, so I was just doodling in my pages. And at the top of the page, I was like, hey, I really want to do something with that. So a lot of years later, my mom found them, and she was like, "You should really make a book out of it." I was like, "Okay, yeah, I should." So she took it, and we made a book, and now I'm here now, so.
Oh, yes, yes. And Father, come on, parents, come on. Do you want to?
Well, you guys know. I think you can get my book at, like, Amazon and Kindle. I mean.
All right. Mom and Dad, y'all want to come here for a picture? So, was that Mr. Stormy that asked that question? Oh, Mr. Stormy, I went ahead of you, and I got my copy. I just needed autograph, that's it. That's right. Right there. I'm telling you. And I'd just like to say, Mr. Tyler actually came up to me during the Juneteenth parade. He came up to me, and he said, "I never got the moment to just say congratulations to you for winning mayor position." So I was very happy about that. It's never too late to say congratulations. Okay, next, we're going to have our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns. I'll just wait for anybody. Go ahead, it's fine, go ahead. Thank you, everyone, for coming for the presentations. I would just like to add, you know, we have to defend our city when people are saying, "What are our youth are doing?" And tonight, you can just see it for yourself with your own eyes, what our youth are doing. So it is possible. We just have to keep supporting them. Okay? Public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk to council. If anyone has a public comment period, they can come up.
Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
City Council and citizens of Lake City.
Oh, can you please make sure that you sign in?
Just the one right here?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, sorry for interrupting. You still, you're good.
Good evening, and, is it on?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to have a few words with you today. My purpose here is threefold. Well, my name is Harry Butler, AKA Butch Butler, from the veteran quarters.
Okay.
That's my roots.
All right.
My purpose here is threefold. One, to address a need of our community. Two, state the need. And three, a solution to help combat the need. The New Life Seventh Adventist Church see the tremendous need for assistance right here in our backyard, and we'd like to be the catalyst to make that, to make that change. With that being said, we'll begin our Phase 1 of our community rebuilding program by investing in 50-plus children, these are schoolchildren. Before our children go back to school, we would like to institute a compassion initiative by giving away backpacks, diapers, haircuts, and sneakers to children without the means to afford them. From July 19 through August 5, 2023, the New Life Seventh Adventist Church will be doing projects to give them, to give out these items to the community. We need donations, we need a little bit more funds to make this a really, really huge event. Unlike other back-to-school initiatives, our investment in the community goes throughout the entire school year. During our back-to-school initiative, we would gather names, addresses, and phone numbers of all children participating in our back-to-school initiative.
Excuse me, I do apologize. We did have two minutes that we have to respect, and we do have more information, like more information to be distributed. We would definitely make sure that we get it out.
Ten seconds.
And we do have flyers from your establishment here. Yes, we do have flyers of his establishment here and the event that will be going on, so please take back to your community, to your church, and your families.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before Masha put that button, I want to make correction on the minutes, and I don't think that should be a part of about two minutes to speak, okay? Mayor Robinson, if you look right before I spoke, it states, "The council is interested in hearing your concerns." That need to be corrected. And my gentleman name is M.A.T.T.I.E.L. Thomas. I know Masha didn't mean that. I speak too here too much, okay? Thank you.
Please note that the minutes are for action, not for verbal speaking. It's only, minutes are only, we don't need to overpay them, because that's why mayor council wants them. The only thing that needs to be corrected on minutes are action items, motions that are taken.
So y'all ain't correct my name?
I will correct your name.
Okay, thank you. So I'm asking, you know, my parents took a lot of time to do that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, now my two minutes start, thank you. Okay, good evening. Mattie Thomas here, I need no introduction. We have some blind spots in this city. I don't know who decided to plant all these trees on 52, but when the hurricane hit, power lines going down. These people turn on red, three spots I can mention, CBS, LeBels, and Independence. They decided to turn on red, and the Independent just coming out anyway. They got blind spots there. I know 52, we had the secruminate climbing, but somebody need to do something about them trees out there on that sidewalk, and there, they are in the power lines, okay? They're in power lines. And we know how this place is with these hurricanes. Part two, what happened to the police substation that was over there? I don't know what little street you would call that, right? But you had a police substation, it's not there no more, and I'm wondering what happened to it. I would like a little bit more information on that, okay? We got the two minutes here. When we invite speakers to come, no time limit is given. In the night, we have beautiful things with these kids. I'm a taxpayer. I've been coming to this meeting before. I've been asked to give excuse when I don't come. But what I'm saying is, I heard tonight, where you got to see mayor and city administration now. The thing I want to know is, who is the administration that we're going to hear from? Because it's in the minute, administration. I didn't elect the administration, I let everyone else. Nobody told me that I was going to do that. Y'all run on that when you running '24, '26? I'd be right there to remind you about this. I am a citizen, and I'm concerned about this city. Everybody here knows it. Everybody knows that. The perfect person is not in this building. And if y'all cannot accept constructive criticism, you not need to be a member of the public. Because see, I'm an elected official too. You know what made me feel so good tonight? I get the same thing you get, but look at the results, these kids are up here, I live for this time. So you have to accept constructive criticism, because we all love this city.
With all due respect, Ms. Mattie, thank you.
Yes. And this $2.50 thing that came up the other day, I need to know an answer to, where that come from, when it was made up, you know, about the water bill. Because I've been paying my bill for the mortgage, and if you look up in there that winter, there's so many signs up there, well, the signs is up there.
Ms. Mattie.
Favorite thing now is to say, well, it's on our webpage, and this and that and the other. Come on, we're going to do better. There's no perfect person in this building.
Ms. Mattie.
And we will have to check ourselves when it comes to certain things.
Ms. Mattie, you did say you're an elected official, please, respect.
But I want to answer to my question, because that's, we didn't elect you for administration. We elected you because you promised to do, to take care of the city along with our help. And constructive criticism is good, okay? I want to thank Deputy Chief Administrator Jody for his concern in helping me out the other day when I came down, but I didn't get the right answers from him. So I'll be back next month, the month after that, starting January 2024, I'll be back until I get an answer from the people I elected as a taxpayer. Thank you. I know I'm rude, I'm going to have a seat.
Any other comments? We're going to go ahead along with our agenda. We have resolution, and we have one resolution on the agenda tonight.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Council, for your consideration, a resolution establishing approval for the acceptance of the recommendation from the bid committee to award MNB construction, the asbestos and non-abestas contractors for the Southwest area demolition project for the City of Lake City and all matters related thereto.
I need a motion to approve Resolution 2023.2026, final reading.
Move to approve Resolution 2023.026 for the final reading.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions, council?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this a new, is this new? Like, because I know that we've already done some.
Part one.
Yeah, okay, so.
This is part two.
Okay, so where is this going to be? I know you said Southwest, could you be more specific?
There are a list of addresses that they were taken to, part of the complete 38 list. You probably weren't on council, I'd be more than happy to have that list sent out again to everybody. And the Pacific eight, Pacific addresses that they visited with these contractors. with these contractors.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So the work done, been done, then they did, uh, this is a new work that's been...
This is part one, it's being completed, this is the proposal to move forward with the part two, because they did them in sections.
This is the same grant, a part of the same grant that we were...
Thirty-eight total addresses, but we have to have approval and acceptance of the property owners before we can move forward. So as, now that they're seeing progress made, we've gotten a lot more of the owners saying, oh, I want in on that bandwagon. And now they're signing off on it. And those that have family trees that extend out, everybody has to sign off. If they're a part of the, 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 the will, they have to have their signature.
So it is an ongoing process?
Yes ma'am.
Because, you know, a lot of people know that it's going on, but they want it to happen like this, and I just wanted, you know, to be...
Three years.
Right, okay.
It's been a three year, we have to jump through hoops to make the federal government happy to get to this point. Because at any point in time that they say, we broke the rules, they're gonna say, write us a check. Any property that we have on the initial list that does not get demolished, we have to refund that money back. We're not eligible to keep it.
And this, and I know we doing this Southwest...
This mic. Can you get your mic, I'm sorry?
This is gonna be provided throughout the whole city.
What, what will happen is, this was the, a grant that we have been working on for three years. Once we conclude with this grant and we close it out, we're eligible to apply for the next one. But the government says you have to do it in an area, you can't pick and choose across, they want a precise area that you can see some results in.
And I have a lot of people that's in the committee that ask about it, and me and Mayor Robinson talking about it, she explained, explained, we said, we want to do what you want to.
So I have on the, the floor for recommendation, uh, to accept the resolution.
Okay, any, any other...
Yes, Mayor Robinson, I have a question. I know, um, there were referenced, um, the, uh, I guess this about the... Was used to identify these houses. You said the, um, Southwest area demolition. Would, uh, can you get the addresses and the criteria that was used to determine which house was chosen?
Uh, yes, he said that he would, he would provide that to each city council member. The whole list, via email, yes ma'am.
Okay, so how many, how old, three asbestos and three non-astase asbestos, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, that's the end of our resolutions, now we'll go to, um, city administrative reports.
Uh, Mayor Council, for your consideration, I present you bid list for, um, the month of May. Um, items number one through eight, I will bring to your attention that four, five, six are already pre-approved items because they're capital purchases, um, but they did list them on here while I was out sick, um, but they actually should not be here, but we will have them on the bid list anyway, they were pre-approved on the capital list with the prior budget.
Okay, I need a motion to approve bills, items one through eight for June twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve bills?
Is that June twenty, June or July?
June twenty twenty-three, because we're in July.
Okay.
Oh, that's for June.
This is for, yeah.
June.
June bill, okay, for June twenty twenty-three.
Excuse me.
No ma'am, it's, it's on, it's on the, um, it's on the agenda, correct.
Uh, for July, I said, okay.
It's June, bills for June.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion?
You did motion, right?
Okay. It was properly moved in second, all in favor, show... Okay, it's been properly moved in second, all in favor, show of hands.
Uh, Mayor Council, for, uh, my final report for you this evening is, uh, the financials, the general fund, and this is, uh, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, uh, and I will remind you, we are still receiving revenues back to last year, uh, they will be sent in as a receivable, um, and recorded, we also still paying bills for last year, they will be JE'd back, uh, if we don't do it, the auditors find it, they will write it up in our audit report and do it for us. So, with the general fund, we have revenues of eleven million, one fifty-four, hundred twenty-three percent of the budget, uh, we have expenditures of twelve million, nineteen, that's a hundred and thirty-two percent of the budget, uh, we've overspent eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, and as I stated again, we still have revenues that need to be posted, uh, from the state and the county. Um, in the water fund, we have revenues of one million, seven fifty-one, ninety-nine percent of the budget, and in the expenses, we have one point six million, ninety-one percent of the budget, we have a surplus of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. In the sewer fund, we have revenues of two million, nine, ninety-five percent of the budget, we have expenses of three million, five, a hundred and fourteen percent of the budget, that's five hundred and ninety-one thousand overspent, and I will remind you that we had the major, um, Highway fifty-two, uh, incident, which was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a few other major repairs that we were still able to cover with our money that we had in the bank, that we didn't have to borrow anything to do that. Uh, the stormwater, we had a hundred and sixty-five thousand in revenue, fifty-eight thousand in expenses, a hundred and seven thousand. That money will be set aside to use for our future, uh, stormwater projects that will be coming up with a bill that the city will have to contribute, uh, almost a half a million dollars to in the next few years. Uh, that's the financials I have for you, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. As, Mr., sorry, William Hall. Um, we don't have any executive session for this meeting, so we're gonna move forward into our mayor and council member reports. We're gonna start on the end with council member Scott.
Okay, been a long night, but a good night, um, I'm excited about what's going on with our youth in this city, uh, to get good report. Uh, I know some of the young ladies that was involved in all the activity that was going on, and, um, my hat go off to them, and the parents for their support also, and also for, uh, the school district for, uh, job well done, uh, so let's continue to work together and continue to move forward. Uh, I see great things and many good things, uh, happening here in our city. Thank everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you all for coming out and voicing your concerns, also congratulations to Mr. McNair, all the young ladies, and Mr. Tyler, on y'all accomplishments this far, continue to do and be great, because you guys are the future of Lake City. I also wanted to congratulate again Mr. Notch and Mr. McKnight on their new top-notch community garden, which is located in District One, which is my district, they will be having their official ribbon cutting on July twenty-fourth, which is a Monday, at ten AM on Ash and M Street. Unfortunately, I would not be able to be in, be in attendance because I have a prior follow-up appointment that morning, but if you are available, please go out, show your support, if you cannot, please just ride around whenever you can, I already seen it, of course, and it's nice, so, thank you all for coming out, see you next month.
Oh, excuse me. Councilwoman Crosby, would you have anything to say?
I want to thank, thank you, Mayor Robinson, I want to thank, um, everyone who presented tonight, special recognition to, um, appreciation to, um, Justin McNair and his mother, Mrs. Mayor McNair, who was my dear classmate, wonderful people, wonderful person, um, the five young ladies participating in Palmetto, all girls, great job, young ladies, the ten young ladies participating in STEM at NASA Space Center, uh, kudos to Dr., um, uh, Superintendent.
Hickson.
Hickson, thank you, I drew a blank, and, um, want, uh, want to thank Tyler Green and congratulate him too, uh, from J. Paul Trulock School, and I apologize, I was not able to be in attendance with you today, I came down around three-thirty today with a virus, and without going into details, I was left sweating profusely and, um, started feeling real, real, real bad, I still feel bad, and I'm not able to keep anything on my stomach, but I thank, um, mayor and, um, city administrator and clerk for making accommodations for me to be on the phone, and also, I want to take note, this past Wednesday, July fifth, as I was going down Matthews Road around one o'clock in the afternoon, I think it was ninety-two degrees, I noticed Mark Fountain, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Lake City, picking up trash. He was on the bridge, he'd just gone over the bridge, and I noticed about four to five bags of trash, and I stopped and said, what are you doing out here in all this heat? He said, well, I just like, I don't like to see all this trash out here, so kudos to him, that was, um, something very, I guess, unremarkable, and, um, someone taking pride, and, um, I thought I'd give him a shout-out. Other than that, I want to thank everyone for coming, please continue to support, uh, the community, the city, and our youth. And see you next time, I hope I'm better, and we'll see you then in person, thanks for coming, good night.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming, uh, just a quick, some quick things that I wanted to, uh, harp on real quick, um, again, congrats to everyone that received , uh, presentations tonight, um, of course, like, uh, Councilwoman S. Secretary said, you are the future, and it's crazy how, the other day I was in church, and the pastor said, well, one of the pastors said, not my pastor, because that's my pastor right there, but, but, uh, the pastor said, is, you never hear anything good coming out of Lake City. And tonight, I wish he could be here to see that, because all of these young people here were doing something good, so, um, yeah, that, that, I mean, like, again, just kudos to them, um, I would also like to thank Mr. Roosevelt Bryant and the Fahim, uh, Temple Shriners, uh, number sixty-six, for hosting the Old School Games in the city, um, which is southern my district, which is District Four this past weekend, um, I did get to see and speak to some of the kids out there, um, and also, we had, like, refreshments for them, so that was a good thing, um, so, kudos to everyone who orchestrated that, um, so that they would have something to do in the summer. Um, also, um, I want to talk about mental health, because I don't know if a lot of people know, but, um, on June twentieth, in my district, someone committed suicide, and I'm a healthcare provider, and so that, that, that touched me, um, you never know what's going on, a lot of people don't want to go to therapy, and then, you know, they have things going on, but they, some people just feel ashamed, or feel that someone is gonna, you know, think bad about them, but it's okay, it is okay to go and talk to somebody, everyone needs someone to talk to, and no one, if you're talking to a licensed professional, it's a HIPAA policy in place, no one is gonna tell your business, there are people, licensed professional people out here that you can trust, so if there's anything ever going on, white, black, Hispanic, whatever your race is, go and see somebody, um, because I, you know, I wish that, when I found out about it, I was like, I wish that he was able to talk to somebody. So you never know what's going on, um, but just, you know, if, if you having problems, if you need to talk to somebody, talk to your pastor, if you have insurance, if you don't have insurance, I, I have, I know how to get you some insurance, so, um, with that, just, it's okay, it's okay to talk to somebody, reach out to me, reach out, and I, and I can, like, point you in, in the right direction, because I'm a big, I'm big on, um, advocating for people with mental health, and just people in the community, period. And also, like, in, I, it's a text, you can also text this, you can also text this, uh, this number for suicide, uh, crisis, it's a suicide, it's, it's just a regular text, and it's nine eight eight, if you dial nine eight eight, it will put you into, um, overconnect you with someone who can help you with, uh, any, if you having any mental health issues, if you're thinking about committing suicide or anything like that. So, um, again, I, like I always say, again, stay vigilant, stay safe, there's a lot of stuff going on in Lake City, um, I've heard of some things that even happen today right outside of Lake City, so, again, stay vigilant, stay safe, because people are desperate, and they're doing anything just to satisfy whatever they, you know, whatever they have going on, so, again, like I said, stay vigilant, stay safe, and, um, don't forget about the giveaways that's going on this week, um, if you have kids, school-aged kids, um, in the community that need bookbags or anything like that, um, please come out, I think we're having something on the thirteenth.
Mm-hmm, Thursday.
So, just coming Thursday, if you are available, um, please bring, excuse me, please come out and, uh, pick up a bag if, you know, if, you know, there any available for, um, your kids, and I think it's a lot of stuff going on on the twenty-second as well, along with the groundbreaking for the new, um...
Stadium.
Yeah, the new stadium, so, um, again, it's a lot of things going on, um, just try to get your kids involved, and so that we can continue to move forward, um, have a good night, y'all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Cooper, please, took everything I wanted to say.
She might have covered mine, too.
I wanna, um, congratulate the kids, the young ladies, the young men for job well done, outstanding, um, it makes me feel good, make my heart warm inside to see that our youth is, is, um, thriving, making, uh, headway to be the best they could be in life, um, that's the biggest key of it all, if we instilling our kids to be the best they could be, we won't have to worry about what's going on in Lake City, our city will become a great place, because you gotta learn at home, and the city is their home, so, uh, with that being said, I'm happy for them, um, I want to give, um, a big thank you to the city of Lake City for the Juneteenth, if y'all didn't come out to this Juneteenth celebration, y'all missed a good time, that was excellent for our city, that was very good, uh, to all the city employees that work extremely hard out during the day, I'm not gonna call everyone name by name, but I know every, every last one of y'all in here had a hand in it, y'all did a very good job, um, with the events and stuff that we have going on weekend, for the youth, it'd be a, a little shy crowd, but still, the kids still have fun, you still making an impact in our community, um, and that's pretty, that's pretty much it for me, but I, I want to thank everyone for coming out, it's sound like I'm getting a little bit better speaking, I'm not stuttering, I'm kind of warming up a little bit, so, uh, let's just, let's just keep it going and keep it, keep it moving forward, and that's all I got to say.
Job.
Good night.
Job well done, Councilwoman Brown. Thank you all for coming out tonight, thank you council members for all your, your reports, and everything that you do on a daily basis, and making sure that City of Lake City moves forward, congratulations to all of our young people that was recognized here today, and just congratulate to all of our young people, period, of the City of Lake City, there are many that we did not see tonight that are doing great things, and we need to just some, just sometimes when you see a child in the schools or at an event, just, just tell them, I'm proud of you, that goes a long way. They hear a lot of people putting them down, or saying, why are you doing that, why are you doing this, but they don't hear enough of us encouraging them and supporting them, and saying that I am proud of you, they are our future, they are our next leaders that you will see up here, so we have to keep supporting them. Um, I would like to share with council an award that was presented to the Lake City Council on Saturday evening at the Save Our Youth Movement Scholarship Gala that was held at the Bean Market, Dr. Marcus McGirt is the Executive Director of this movement, um, it's an appreciation award presented to the Council of Lake City, thank you for supporting this cause for the betterment of the youth of tomorrow, July eighth, twenty twenty-three, Marcus McGirt, Executive Director, and I just want to thank him for actually having and hosting, thank you, hosting this gala here in Lake City for the very first time, and hopefully it won't be the last time. I was actually awarded that night too, did not know it, I was honorary MC, and he kind of marked that off my paperwork, so I guess I wouldn't see, but he awarded me as well for the Shining Star Award, and we also had several community leaders and a couple of students that received scholarships and awards that night, and, um, just to name them, Mr. the late Rashad, Mr. Rashad Graham was awarded the, um, Servant's Heart, Heart Award. And, um, just to name them, Mr. The late Rashad, Mr. Rashad Graham was awarded the, um, Servant's Heart, Heart Award. Um, Pastor Paula Morris was awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award. And Coach Matt Apicella was awarded the Community Hero Award. And just Mr. Justin McKnight, it just keeps on going and going and going for him. But he was awarded a scholarship on that evening along with Ms. Kyle Morris. So Lake City have a lot of great people, a lot of great things going on in this city. And I hear it here, and I hear it when I go outside of Lake City, and it just warms my heart. I have that proud mayor moment, seriously. So I thank everybody for everything that you do, because not one person can do it. It takes all of us doing it together, and we're doing a fine job. Um, we do have plenty of announcements and plenty of things that are going on. I'm not gonna go through and, and name, some of them were already named, but I'm not gonna go through and name all of them. But we do have flyers over here, we have resources over here, we have all the announcements that, of things that's going on throughout the city, um, in the upcoming month or two. If you have anything that you would like for us to get out to the community, please, bring it to the administration office so we can help you advocate for that. We want our citizens to know. And I, and I always come against, uh, come upon that, that's the main thing. People don't get help because they just don't know where to get the help from. But if we come together and bring the resource that I don't know about, that Mr. William may know about, or Ms. Marsha may not know about, bring it to us, so we can help you get it out. Um, so our city can be a better city. Um, I think that's all that I have, I appreciate everybody for coming tonight. And we will definitely see you all back here next month. I pray that you all have a continuous safe, and safe Ju- month of July. By the time we see you again, school will be starting back. So please continue to have a safe summer, thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Thank you.